County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. In lieu of an invocation, we'll have a moment of silence followed by the pledge. If you are willing and able, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our meeting is now called to order, and I'll turn things over to John Peterson, our zoning manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are here when their case is called. After that, we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so that they be counted for the record. After that, both parties will be asked to come forward, to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and the opposition, if anyone, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets ten minutes to state their case or concerns, and there's not a process to reserve your time or to rebut what was said previously. So you need to convey all your information to the board within your ten-minute time period. Additionally, if one person wishes to speak on an issue, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets ten minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After the discussion, the board will either make a decision to either approve or deny, hold or continue the matter at hand. Madam Chair and Board, there are two cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z thirty of two thousand and twenty-three, QuickTrip Corporation. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Second case is rezoning case L E P thirty of two thousand and twenty-three, Donald Perry. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three, S D P Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Border Commissioner's zoning hearing. So Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, Mychester, Inc. This case was continued by the staff until the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Border Commissioner's zoning hearing. So Z thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z forty of two thousand and twenty-three, Atlanta Remediation Group LLC. This case was continued by staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z forty of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-three, Ten Fifty Four Investment Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff to the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z fifty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, S S Developers LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z fifty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z sixty of two thousand and twenty-three, M R E Canton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z sixty of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-three, Cedar Real Estate Group Four LLC. This case was continued until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z sixty-four will not be heard today. And just as a side note, this case will be shown as withdrawn on next month's agenda since this is a pending PC case. So Z sixty-four will be withdrawn on the next agenda. Rezoning case Z two of two thousand and twenty-four, Florianoid Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z two will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z three of two thousand and twenty-four, Ashwani Kumar Cora. This case was continued by staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z three will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z four of two thousand and twenty-four, Big Gym Therapy LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z four will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z six of two thousand and twenty-four, In-Line Communities LLC. This case was continued by staff until the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing. Z six will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number Forty of two thousand and twenty-three, Curly Family Homes LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Border Commissioner's zoning hearing. So Other Business Forty of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number Sixty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, Chick-fil-A, Inc. This case was continued by staff until the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Border Commissioner's zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number Sixty-six will not be heard today. And finally, Other Business Item Number Sixty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, Noble Storage LLC, Estate of Doty, and Donald K. Nix. This case was continued by the staff until the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Border Commissioner's zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number Sixty-eight will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get a request this morning to continue Other Business Item Number Two of two thousand and twenty-four, Three Sixty Property Solutions LLC. The applicant is here, and the applicant would like more time to work on his case. So the staff had asked the board to continue this case until your March nineteenth zoning hearing.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, we spoke with the applicant right before the meeting, and he's still working on the lot. So I make a motion that we do continue this till the March meeting.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. So LUP two is the Nottingham Drive lot. So if anyone was here, and I apologize if you got up early to come, but that is being continued until the March nineteenth meeting next month for him to work out some adjoining lots. So you don't have to stay. I'm sorry, what?
Other business or Other Business Item Number?
I'm sorry, yes, Other Business two, not LUP two. We will hear LUP two. But Other Business two, you can leave. You don't have to stay because it will not be heard today.
Okay, I just want to recognize there's typically a statement that you and Commissioner Gamble have added. Did you need that added?
Yes, I did.
I'd like the clerk to add my statement as is on file.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion to adjourn. It was already. Okay. John, you can continue.
Okay.
Don't we have to call the question?
It's okay. Moves fast up here.
Okay, before we start the actual hearing, I do have two announcements to make for the audience. If you have a cell phone, please put your phone on silent. When the phone's ringing, it does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information was due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. And before I begin, LUP thirty-two is on consent, Julia Welton. The commissioner wants a heavy hearing on that, so we're going to pull that off consent and just put it into regular order.
Okay, which one is this?
LUP thirty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. First case on consent is rezoning case Z sixty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, Forty-One Park and Toy and Self-Storage, Inc. Request rezoning from G C and R twenty to L I for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lot Two and Thirty-seven of the Twentieth District. The property is located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, south of Third Army Road. The Planning Commissioner recommends deletion of Z sixty-six of two thousand and twenty-three to the N R C zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, which includes the revised site plan. Number two, fire department comments or recommendations. Number three, water and sewer department comments or recommendations. Number four, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number five, Cobb DOT comments or recommendations. Number six, any and all changes to go back to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Number seven, no onsite servicing or repair of boats, RVs, four-wheelers, or other toys, as they are called and parked there, and specifically, no oil changes. Number eight, all other stipulations not otherwise in conflict, including those stated in the September eleventh, two thousand and three stipulation letter from Mr. Garvis Samms, Jr., will apply. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z sixty-six? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. S L E P eight of two thousand and twenty-three, Forty-One Park and Toy and Self-Storage, Inc. Request a special land use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lots Two and Thirty-seven of the Twentieth District. The property is located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, south of Third Army Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of S L U P eight of two thousand and twenty-three, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, which includes the revised site plan. Number two, fire department comments or recommendations. Number three, water and sewer department comments or recommendations. Number four, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number five, Cobb DOT comments or recommendations. Number six, any and all changes to go back to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Number seven, no onsite servicing or repairs of boats, RVs, four-wheelers, or other toys, as they are called and parked there, and specifically, no oil changes. And number eight, all other stipulations not in conflict, including those stated in the September eleventh, two thousand and three stipulation letter from Mr. Garvis L. Samms, Jr., will apply. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to S L E P eight of two thousand and twenty-three? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z five of two thousand and twenty-four, Mariana Kovitch requests a rezoning from R A four to L R O for a medical office in Land Lots Nine and Ten of the First District. The property is located on the south side of Lower Russell Road, west of Woodlawn Drive. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z five to the limited professional services permit, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan dated January second, two thousand and twenty-four, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, health practitioner or professional office use only, with specific users, subject to district commissioner approval. Number three, landscape plan, which includes a ten-foot buffer adjacent to the existing residential properties, to be approved by the district commissioner. Number four, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Number five, fire department comments or recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. And number eight, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z five? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. L E P one of two thousand and twenty-four, Cristel Y. Herrera, Jr. Request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot Two Sixteen of the Twentieth District. The property is located on the south side of Hood Circle and on the east side of Kennesaw-Dewest Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP one for twenty-four months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the car that has its wheels removed is to be moved into the garage within thirty days of the approval date by the Board of Commissioners. And number two, there is to be a maximum of four vehicles parked in the driveway on a regular basis. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP one, Cristel H. Herrera, Jr.? Is there anyone here opposed? Madam Chair and Board, there's no one opposing. The applicant is not present. Would it be the board's wish to leave it on consent?
Commissioner Gamble.
Is it, and do we need to follow policy, though, and try to reach out to them to see if they're on their way or en route?
Yes, we can give them a call.
If we could give them a call, please.
Okay, so we'll put that one on hold right now.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, I know we typically do that when there's a hearing, but if this is something that is going to remain on consent, then...
So we'll just pull it?
There's no harm. There's no harm if it's pulled. Because the consent is just one vote on all of the matters. So is it a desire to pull this from consent?
It is not my desire, but we make other applicants be here even though their items are on consent. So it's just a matter...
Not necessarily if they're on consent, if they're on consent and they're not present and their support, they're not necessarily required to be present. It's when we do have a hearing and they're not present. So there's no harm in us holding it to the board. It's just if we can't reach out to the applicant, we may be back in the same situation. If the commissioner desires to hold it, we can do that and still reach out.
My desire is to have staff reach out and find out if the applicant is en route and understood that they needed to be here or not. Again, because we have other applicants that are on consent that are here, I just want to find out if they're stuck in traffic, if they didn't understand they needed to be here, or such.
Okay, and my staff is reaching out to them right now.
Okay, thank you.
Rezoning case L E P four of two thousand and twenty-four, Congregation Eschheim requests a rezoning, excuse me, request a temporary land use permit renewal for a daycare in Land Lot Nine Sixty-nine of the Sixteenth District. The property is located on the south side of Russell Road and on the north side of Fairfield Drive, east of Indian Hills Parkway. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP four for twenty-four months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Number two, fire department comments or recommendations. Number three, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And number four, all previous stipulations from LUP ten of two thousand and ten and LUP twelve of two thousand and twelve, including the letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated March fifteenth, two thousand and ten. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L E P four? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. L E P five, Yolanda Castillo requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in Land Lot Sixty-four of the Seventeenth District. The property is located on the south side of Lowell Drive, east of Cunningham Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP five for twenty-four months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no parking of vehicles on the right-of-way on an overnight basis. And number two, all vehicles owned by the permanent residents to be parked in the driveway. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L E P five? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. L E P six of two thousand and twenty-four, Early Education LLC requests a temporary land use permit renewal for a daycare in Land Lots Fifty, Fifty-One, Ninety-four, and Ninety-five of the Seventeenth District. The property is located on the west side of Hurt Road, north of Plantation Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP six for twenty-four months, subject to the following conditions. The maximum number of students permitted by fire, by state and fire codes. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L E P six? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. And moving into Other Business Cases on the consent agenda. Other Business Item Number One of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider a reduction of public road frontage from seventy-five feet to zero feet and a setback variance for accessory structures for Scott and Julia Ebert. The property is located on the north end of Trail Road, south of Dewest Road, in Land Lot Two Ninety-eight of the Twentieth District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, road frontage to zero feet and accessory structure variance is approved. Number two, stormwater management comments, and number three, fire department comments. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to O B number one? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number Three of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider a reduction of public road frontage from seventy-five feet to zero feet for Janice and Dennis Wells, and to allow setback in location variances for accessory structures for Glenn and Kathleen Barnett. The property is located at the end of Paris Lane in Land Lot Eight Seventy-One of the Sixteenth District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, Forty-One Paris Lane approved for zero feet of public road frontage. And number two, Forty-Two Paris Lane approved for the accessory structure shown on the site plan received January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Three? Let the record show that there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number Four of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Luke Wemet regarding applications Z eighty-three and S L U P fourteen of two thousand and sixteen. The property is located on the south side of Powder Springs Road, east of Sanders Road, in Land Lots Eight Thirty-eight and Eight Sixty-five of the Nineteenth District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, stormwater management comments. Number three, fire department comments. Number four, Cobb DOT comments. Number five, and number five, building elevation contained in the Other Business packet, with the final elevation to be approved by the district commissioner. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Four? Got one opposed, so we'll pull that off consent and put it into regular order, Madam Chair and Board. And lastly, Other Business Item Number Five of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider amending in the site plan stipulations for Fifth Third Bank regarding rezoning application Z two twenty-three of nineteen eighty-eight and Z ninety-five of nineteen ninety for property located on the west side of Gordy Parkway and on the north side of Schallford Road in Land Lot Three Thirty-five and Three Eighty-six of the Sixteenth District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Number two, district commissioner to approve the final building elevations, signage, tree save plan, and landscaping plans after Architectural Control Committee review. Number three, stormwater management comments. Number four, fire department comments. Number five, Cobb DOT comments. And number six, all previous stipulations not in conflict to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Five? Let the record show that there's no one opposed, and that completes the...
John, the commissioner has a remark.
Okay.
Yes, I would also like to enter for the record the approval from the Architectural Control Committee and also the five stipulations that we're adding that the applicant has agreed to as well.
Is the applicant amenable to those changes? I see a thumbs up. Thank you, partners.
And does a court need these?
Commissioner, are there any other changes needed to that item? No, ma'am. Okay, how about any other matters? Yes, Commissioner Sheffield.
I'd like to add Z fifty-seven to the consent agenda. John, if you wouldn't mind calling if there's, to see if there's any opposition.
Okay. Rezoning case Z fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, Gordon Todd Spencer requests rezoning from G C and C F to N R C for a laundromat, which is self-serve and full service, in Land Lot Seven Seventy-five of the Nineteenth District. The property is located on the east side of Ossie Road, north of Amy Lane. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three? Let the record show that there's no one opposed.
Okay. I'd like to add, do I have to make a motion or just because we haven't voted yet, I can just add?
We need to have a motion first to ask the consent agenda to add it.
Okay.
And then you need to add your conditions.
Okay, all right. Well, I make a motion to add Z fifty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three, to the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner, did you have some stipulations to read in? Yeah. Motion, why don't you go ahead and do that? I have, we have to vote to add.
It's okay, go ahead and add it, and then the stipulations will be read into the consent agenda.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. We'll call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Okay. I'd like to add the following stipulations to Z fifty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Number one, the enclosure to consist of the same material as the primary structure and approved by the district commissioner. Construction hours are to be Monday through Saturday from seven a.m. to seven p.m. Construction is prohibited on Sunday. Business hours are limited to six a.m. to nine p.m., Monday through Thursday and on Sunday, and business hours are limited to six a.m. to ten p.m. on Friday and Saturday. Approval is for this use only. Liquor stores are prohibited at this location, and any other use must come back before the Board of Commissioners as an Other Business application. Approval will include the Planning Commission stipulation, with the exception of stipulation number one. Strike paragraph six B five that references change machines from Todd Spencer's stipulation letter dated January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the final lighting plan to be approved by the district commissioner. And that concludes my stipulations.
Is the applicant amenable to those stipulations that were read by the commissioner? Okay, thank you. The applicant said yes for those who are listening remotely.
And I'd just like to also, do we need to vote? I just wanted to add a little note to...
We'll vote when we add, when we vote on all of the matters on consent. But if you have something with respect to this item only, you can address that.
Yeah, with this item only to the applicant, I just wanted to thank you for the time that you invested in the zoning process, and your original application was that of a liquor store. So I really appreciate you taking my concerns and the community concerns into consideration. And while this is not the business that we decided on, it is still not a liquor store. So for that, I'm appreciative. So thank you.
Okay, commissioners, are there any other changes needed to the consent agenda? Okay, do we have an update, Jeannie or John, with respect to...
Yes, we have called them, emailed them, and texted them, and we have not heard anything back yet.
Okay, so Commissioner, what would you like to do? Would you like to hear this item, continue this item?
I'd like to continue it to the March nineteenth hearing, please.
Okay.
What that one was? This is LUP one. Oh, excuse me. I have LUP one here.
So that's LUP one.
Oh, see, you're right, LUP one.
So I have us pulling LUP thirty-two for the regular agenda?
Yes.
Okay. And then again, I have LUP four, which is to be heard. Do you have that on your records as well? Excuse me, yes, Other Business Item Four, Luke Wemet?
Yes, that's going to be heard in its regular order.
Okay. And then again, we're adding Z fifty-seven to consent?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Gamble, do you want to make that in the form of a motion for that one to be pulled and or continued?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we continue L E P one of two thousand and twenty-four until the March nineteenth hearing date. Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Okay, with that, commissioners... Okay, with that, commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. Thank you, the motion passes 5-0. Anyone who is here with respect to any of the matters that have been approved on the consent agenda, you are free to leave at this time, recognizing that there are two matters on consent that we will hear today, which include LUP 32 for Julia Welton and other business item number 4 for Luke Wemet. We'll take a couple minutes of people conclude.
Okay, first case we're going to hear today is LUP number 32 of 2023, Julia Welton, requests a temporary land use permit to allow dog boarding and daycare in landlot 148 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Hill Road and on the northwest side of Morris Hill Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 32? Let the record show that no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
You may begin whenever you're ready. You'll have 10 minutes to provide your presentation this morning.
Okay.
Just make sure you state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Julia Welton, and I am here for a temporary land use permit for dog boarding and daycare out of my home. We have plans to only accommodate up to 10 dogs for boarding, and up to maybe an additional five for the daycare aspect. We are a home-based business, so the two of us, this is my sister, we will always, somebody will always be home, the dogs will always be supervised, and outdoor time, indoor playtime, all of that, somebody will be watching the dogs and there to assist with any of their needs. The drop-off times we have set in place are from 8 to 10 a.m. The pickup times are from 4 to 6 p.m. Those are both by appointment only. So the driveway has been updated to a U shape to accommodate up to six vehicles, but they must text us within that two-hour window to schedule a time for pickup or drop-off, so we won't be impeding the traffic on Hill Road. The safety of the dogs and the pet owners and employees is top priority. There is a double gate to the entrance to the basement to prevent dogs from escaping or getting loose. We are both PetSaver CPR certified. I am Fear Free certified, and we are really focused on reducing fear, anxiety, and stress in the dogs that we have in our care. Our dog-to handler ratio will be lower than the industry standard of one handler to every 10 to 15 dogs, in order for any potential situations to be immediately mitigated. Only dogs who are well-socialized will be allowed in group play. Group play will be determined by pet size and play styles, and separate areas will be provided to accommodate each. We have emergency situations, you know, with our CPR certification and things like that, so we have that covered. You know, sanitation-wise, we have sanitation policies in place where everything will be stripped and clean after each dog's departure. In regards to noise, I know there was concerns about barking. With us being, one of us being home, you know, constantly, we will always be addressing any kind of barking that may be happening. We obviously will not accept excessive barkers as customers. All dogs are required to be up to date on their vaccinations, and those vaccinations will not be allowed to expire during their stay. We originally had applied for a 24-month land use permit for the business. I know that we were previously approved for up to 12 months, but we would really appreciate if we could have the 24-month approval, and we thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you for your presentation. Because there is no opposition, I'll turn things over to the commissioner, and we'll call you back up if we have any more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamber, you can begin when you're ready.
At first glance, this property looks like it is sitting out in the middle of nowhere, where it won't potentially take away from the enjoyment of others around there. Going back and looking at historically, where I've had a lot of complaints in my district, and then we also, this board had a rezoning application several years ago for a dog boarding situation in residential. I went and measured the distance from that location to where the complaints came in, and this falls within that same distance from adjoining neighborhoods. So while this picture doesn't show, within about 500 or 600 feet to the west, we have homes, we have homes behind, and going back to the north, and then also to the northeast. So with experience of complaints coming from in-home dog boarding, this falls within that range, which makes it difficult to approve, because while they are saying that they're going to have a policy of no excessive barking, with up to 15 dogs, you start one and they all go. I know that's what's happening in my neighborhood right now, and they're all personally-owned pets, not necessarily a boarding system. Also, my concern is they are on septic. My one that I had a few years ago was on septic, and their septic was failing because it was not set up to use for commercial use. It was a residential septic, not a commercial septic. I have health, welfare, and moral concerns for the surrounding area, as again, code enforcement is often called out for excessive dog barking, and that is one issue that is very difficult to address from a code enforcement standpoint. This is, again, clearly an established residential. Our Cobb County Code does allow for boarding in industrial areas, and even in the industrial areas where it is allowable by code, we still receive complaints of barking. So with those reasons, I would like to make a motion to deny LUP 32 of 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Burrow.
I noticed that staff recommended denial, but PC recommended approval, but with some additional steps, and I didn't know, they're saying 10 dogs. Does that make a difference, or does it still be the same?
It's still the same, and then we just heard in her testimony that while she's asking for 10 dogs for boarding, she then wants to add five more for daycare. So that was part of her testimony as well. And again, unfortunately, this is a big issue for code enforcement. It is a residential area.
Okay, are there any other questions, or is there any other discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Okay, rezoning case Z 1, Myrna Araceli Torres Castro, requests a rezoning from RA5 and PSC to LRC for an office in landlot 189 of the 18th District. The property is located on the east side of Mableton Parkway and on the north side of Community Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 1? Let the record show that no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Now, while the applicant is being sworn in, I just want to tell the two ladies of the prior LUP, we thank you for considering a possible business idea. I hope that you recognize the commissioner's concerns. Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Darrell Johnson with JDM Consultants. So I'm representing the applicant here. We're looking to rezone the property from an RA5 to an LRC. Commercial use to support an insurance office for them, a family business. We have designed the site strategically so that there were no issues with any incoming traffic off of Mableton Parkway. We've provided another entrance off of Community Road. We have taken a look at staff comments and addressed those accordingly, and provided striping along the right-of-way at Mableton Parkway. We extended the road coming into the site off of Mableton. We have adequate parking. In this particular situation, we'll be providing underground detention, which would discharge into a culvert at the right-of-way. I want to reserve my time if there's any other questions, but just a simple rezoning from RA5 to LRC.
Thank you, sir. And I did not see, did we have any opposition for this matter?
I do.
Excuse, okay, would you like to speak with respect to this? Okay, why don't we get you sworn in here if you have not been?
I can yield my time for any questions.
They have, okay, thank you. They have 10 minutes, so we'll, they may have adequate time, but if you would like to yield your additional time, if they go over 10 minutes, I'll...
Just in case, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. If you can state your name for the record, please.
I am Andiel McCrery. This is my husband, Ronald McCrery, and we are the pastors of New Life Missionary Baptist Church.
Okay.
Which is adjacent, this land is adjacent, or down the street from us. In fact, it's in front of the church property.
Okay.
So we just have a couple of concerns, you know, don't really mind that it's turning commercial. We do have a couple of concerns. Number one, we're on septic. So whatever is being put in front of us, I don't know how they plan to handle that.
Okay.
We tried years ago to do a daycare, and it didn't work because we were on septic, okay? It's just, we would have to go in and do a lot of changes, so we decided not to do that. We are still on septic, okay?
Okay.
That's one of our questions. And then the other one is that we also own the land across that has the pond. It is a natural pond. That pond crosses the street, goes underneath the road, over into, on the property that, you know, Mr. Torres is planning to put the insurance company. So I just want to make sure that we handle that just right, because that's a natural flow. Part of it is on our property, and part of it is on the other property, so we want to make sure that there's no, there's no problems when it comes to building and all of that, okay? And then we also are planning, or also have in place, that we're looking at property lines, making sure that the property lines are what they're supposed to be.
Because...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I've just had a stroke, so I'm trying to just say this. This property has been redeveloped by us. All of a sudden, after we redeveloped that land, there were many years that nothing was ever done to that property where they're thinking about building up now. So once again, we have rebuilt it, we built that land, and now they're saying the marks, the markers are coming against what we're working on. There, when we purchased it, there was no, there was a house there, and we removed the house, and then we redeveloped that land. And it wasn't until a couple of years ago, all of a sudden, no one could get that land, and now, all these, everything comes back. But, you know, I just believe that markers can be moved, because we, you know, we've been here all these years, 26 years, and so we just have some concerns. If it's his property, and even though we built it and did everything, if it's his, you know, we know he'll take good care of it, but I just have some concerns of it. I don't know if that makes...
So we're looking at that in terms of survey, you know, they've already told us how to handle that part of it, but we do have just some concerns of the two things. Number one, their entrance will be our entrance, and I do understand that they're not open on the same days that the church will be meeting, okay? So the church is usually meeting sometimes during the week, if it's vacation Bible school, during the summer, or something of that nature, but not normally. So that shouldn't, we're just concerned, their entrance, we're concerned about the natural flow of the pond, how that's going to be handled, and then, you know, as I said before, the church still is on septic, does that, you know, all of those things to be taken in consideration, and how that could potentially affect the church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this matter? Okay, not seeing any, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start with Tim, since the conversation in Water has come up.
Yeah, Tim Davidson, Cobb County Water.
Hey, Tim, can you address the concerns regarding the water runoff? I had, I read through the environmental study, and I have some follow-up questions for you on that, but can you address the concerns with respect to the runoff from their property, and if the underground detention pond would be a solution?
Probably not. That'd be Andrew.
That's stormwater, I'm sorry. Andrew, I'm sorry, Tim.
But there was a couple mentions of the septic system and so forth. I'm not sure if there was any follow-up questions on that.
Hold on while I have you there.
I can come back up. If there are, I can come back.
Yeah, there was a question about the septic.
Right, I believe the church is to the east.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. They're on septic, there's, is the sewer layer turned on? Yeah, they're on septic, there's no sewer immediately around the church, but this development will be able to connect to sewer, in fact, they'll be required to connect to sewer by code. There's sewer out in Mableton Parkway, there's also sewer up on Community Drive.
Community Road.
So they'll actually be required to connect to sewer, but that won't have any impact on the church being on septic currently.
Okay, okay. Okay, that was all I had for you, I suppose. I guess I can have, unless you all had something, yeah?
I see a hand.
Just a follow-up, Tim, do they need, the church, do they need an easement to connect to the sewer, or is that already in place?
For this development to connect to sewer?
No, I'm sorry. So you were saying that sewer is in place, which means the church would have to connect to sewer, correct? Or were you talking the applicant?
No, this development.
This current development.
This case will be required. It's a new development. They're required to connect to sewer.
Okay.
The church has a permitted septic system, so they can remain on septic as long as that's functioning properly.
Okay, so, but if, if the septic would fail in the future, would there be an easement to allow the church to connect to the sewer since it's essentially going to be extended closer to them?
I'm not sure if it would naturally flow to the west.
Okay.
We'd have to look at where, where the sewer wants to flow from the church and determine how to, if a repair is acceptable at that point, or if there'd be required to connect to sewer.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Hi, Andrew Heath, Cobb Stormwater Management.
Hey, Andrew, how are you today?
Fine, thank you.
Good. Can you address the water runoff concerns? Let me see. Can you address the concerns from the adjacent property owners?
Yes, this site, and you can see on the image there from GIS, there's a small, I guess it's a commercial type site, just to the northwest of this site, they have a small detention pond, and the site water runs into that pond, which then drains into the little blue line that you see that crosses this site for a short distance before it goes under Community Road. And this site is proposing to add an underground detention pond to manage their stormwater management. The pond that's to the south of Community Road that you see there, interestingly, if you turn on the layers for topography, the way that little blue stream is shown there, it actually doesn't flow directly into that lake. It kind of goes around the side of that lake and bypasses it. Now that said, that's a little bit of an unusual arrangement. Usually lakes have some watershed that feeds them in order to provide water and keep them healthy. Now, that lake isn't a very large lake. There may be enough adjacent drainage just from runoff to provide for that, but nevertheless, in our comments, I requested that they provide a lake sediment study for that, just to be sure that we've covered our bases there. But it doesn't look like, at least from the information that we have now, that runoff from that site is actually going to pass through that lake right now, is my best understanding.
Okay. And there is a slither of wetlands, excuse me, also on that property. Would that be satisfied through the sewer system or the underground detention?
They, if they have wetlands there, and that needs to be, and I'm not 100% clear if that's actually been formally identified, or if it's just, somebody just looked at it and said, oh, I think this is wetlands. But if it is wetlands, then there is a process they could go through if they disturb those wetlands, but the applicant would need to do that, you know, at the time, while they're going through and getting their land disturbance permit, they would need to follow that process for disturbances of wetlands if there are wetlands present there.
Okay. All right, thanks. I'm just pulling up the, the environmental study. I think it was a reference to the wetlands in that, in that study. Did you receive a copy of that letter?
I can't recall. If that was in the zoning packet, I'm sure I read it. I have read that there were wetlands there.
Okay.
Sometimes it isn't really clear. Now, if they've been identified, that's wonderful. We're ahead of the game there. A lot of times, wetlands aren't actually identified until the land disturbance time, and so sometimes references to wetlands are maybe not official, so to speak. But if that is the case, then that's fine. The applicant will need to follow that guidance and adhere to the permitting that's, that's required for that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Does anyone have questions for Andrew before I call up DOT? No? Okay. DOT, Ligia?
Good morning, Ligia Florim, DOT.
Good morning. Just have two questions for you. For the recommended length of the D cell or the taper lane, I'm sorry, what will be the recommended length? Because when I look at the site plan, it seems to be very, very short.
Correct. So first of all, let me preemptively say that this is DOT, Georgia Department of Transportation jurisdiction, so they will have to obtain their approval for the encroachment permit for the driveway on Mabelton Parkway. Having said that, what we're recommending is that at least that an improved radius, because they are very close to Community Road and Mabelton Parkway. They won't obviously be able to put in a taper even or a, or a right turn lane. So an improved radius, and it's privy to the Georgia Department of Transportation approval. But they did modify, as the applicant mentioned, they did modify the throat so that they have the maximum uninterrupted access, so that cars that turn into the driveway can get out of the road and not be impeding traffic. So we're satisfied with that.
Okay.
And they, give me one more second, and then we also recommended that that driveway be right in, right out, because it's too close to the factory shows intersection.
Right, okay. And also, does the revised site plan address your comments regarding internal connection between the parking spaces?
It did not. That was a recommendation for them, and it's up to their site plan, and they presumably do not want that connection. We thought it would be, it would provide a more circulation from the Community Road driveway to the Mabelton Parkway driveway, but that was not the case.
Okay. And the opposition shared that there is a, this would be a shared driveway on, on Community?
I wasn't aware of that. Maybe Community Road, because the cars for the new office will be turning onto Community Road.
Right.
But then the other drive, the driveway off of Community Road, I don't think that that's shared.
Right, it's on the subject property solely, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I have for DOT unless someone else has any questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, can we see this site zoomed out, please, on the screen? Trying to see where Community Road goes to on the east.
It's dead end, I think.
So it dead ends, and that's why it may be perceived to be a shared road, but is that a public road, or is that private?
It is. I believe it's a public road, yes. I have it as a local.
Yeah, but as a local road, okay. So as far as maintenance, it would be Cobb County's responsibility, and no easement would be needed because it's a local road.
That's correct.
It's just a shared road, not necessarily a shared driveway?
Yes. I'm checking on GIS so that I can verify. Yes, so I have it all the way to the end as a local road.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Commissioner Brown.
Where, where is the church's entrance or drive, driveway off of Community Road?
It looks good, yeah, the end, in that stretch of...
That's on that end.
It's just a trees.
And their, their entrance off of Community Road is where the yellow line dips down?
I think so.
Or further to...
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the new development? Yes, it's around there where the line is. Yes, around where the cursor is somewhere there.
And the church's access is only through Community Road?
Yes.
They don't have any access from Mabelton Parkway?
I don't believe so, yeah. It's a dead end road.
And just as a follow-up, Ligia, if you can confirm that Community Road, it meets the local requirement in terms of width, so there are vehicles that can travel in both directions without there being any type of challenges or obstructions?
That is a good question. So towards Mabelton Parkway, it does meet our requirements, but as it approaches their church, it does not and narrows down. So it's substandard.
Okay, and once it reaches the church, do you know the width?
I can measure it, just, I'll park it on GIS right now.
But any patrons of the new development wouldn't necessarily have to travel to the area where it's substandard?
Correct. So it's 18 and narrows down to 18 feet, and our standard is 11-foot lanes, which is 22.
Okay, and for the width in front of the church?
Yeah, that's 18.
That's 18, okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I have for, for DOT. I do have a question for John. Thank you, Ligia. There was a reference in the PC minutes regarding variances, but I didn't find any in the zoning comments.
Yeah, I think initially, the original plan may have had a variance or two, but the new plan does not.
Okay, all right. Also, also in the PC minutes, there was a reference to the commissioner approving the site plan that was, let's see, dated?
January 25th.
January 25th, right. So with that revised site plan, does that include the reduction in the parking spaces?
It is a reduction, but it still meets the minimum parking required for the zoning category.
Right, okay. So, because the recommendation is for me to approve the site plan, so I just want to kind of go over a couple of things. So it is a reduction in the parking spaces. The original, the original site plan did not have a detention facility identified where the revised one does.
Yes.
It's an underground detention facility.
Correct.
And the connectivity between the parking spaces, although Ligia just shared that there is no connectivity, but just looking at this, it appears that there is like a concrete walkway from the parking space to the rear to connect to the front. Is that not a walkway?
That is a walkway.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you for that. And, and I guess I can ask you this question rather than bring up the applicant, but there's a number five reflected on the site plan to the left. Does that represent the number of parking spaces on that side?
On the Mabelton Parkway side, there's five parking spaces.
Okay.
In the, in the back, where the Community Road accesses, there's 14 parking spaces.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to confirm that that number five was represented parking spaces.
Yeah, they're, they're only required to have 14, and I think they show 19 on this plan.
Okay, all right, fantastic. That's all the questions that I have. I don't need to call up the applicant. John kind of filled in some blanks for me. I'm not sure if you all had any questions for the applicant or anyone else before I make my motion.
Commissioner, they brought up another issue of the property line in survey, and wanted to know if we had any review of that through our staff. And I see the applicant also has a document. They may be able to refer to that, but that was an outstanding issue of opposition.
Okay. John, with respect to the markers, when the documents are submitted for, the zoning application documents are submitted, are they required to submit a survey as well?
They normally submit an ASBIL survey that shows where the property lines are. And looking at the survey right now, it, it shows rebars at all the corners here.
And what does that mean for the general public?
The, the rebars are what actually marks the property line, and there's three points along that common property line. They all have rebars marked there.
Okay.
So, you know, we can double-check that at plan review when they submit their ASBIL, but I'm, I'm pretty certain that what they're showing on the survey on the screen is the property line.
Okay. And my assumption is that those are the markers that, that were referenced earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So for the concern of the opposition, we have a survey, and once it goes through plan review, then that will be confirmed as well. So there will not be any building or development on your property. Okay, all right. All right. You have a question?
If you look down here on the right, they do have underground detention proposed.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't on the original submission, yeah, but I just wanted to confirm publicly. Are there any other questions? Concerns? Okay. All right, well, with that, I am prepared to make a motion. I just want to thank the developer for their interest in developing in the new city of Mabelton, and I do support staff's assessment, well, these are comments before my motion. I do support staff assessment of the proposed use of your zoning application, and the proposal does conform with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan, and it is a use that is suitable in the view of use and development of adjacent and nearby commercial properties. Based on the elevations and the plans that have been submitted, it appears that the business would be a great addition to the commercial corridor of Mabelton Parkway. There's a lot happening along that corridor without trails. There, there, there's new development, so there's a lot there. So we're really excited about the development of that corridor. And I am prepared to make my motion. I make a motion to approve Z1 2024 to the LRC zoning district with the following conditions. Construction hours are to be Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Sidewalks are to be installed on Community Road pursuant to the Development Code and not in fee, not fee in lieu of sidewalks, but actual sidewalks to be installed. Approval of the planning commission comments and recommendations dated February 6, 2024, and staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Second. All right, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Gamble?
Commissioner Sheffield, I think also what part of the church's concern is, is construction vehicles potentially going down and using their parking lot to turn around. Would you consider having a, no construction vehicles beyond this point put up on Community Road to essentially let construction vehicles know that they shouldn't be going down to turn around?
The question becomes, would they be able to turn around? But there is no parking lot at this point on that site. The site has to be cleared. So they're not going to utilize private property. I don't know that I heard concern about parking in their parking lot.
Not parking in their parking lot, but essentially going in, going down, and turning around in their parking lot.
I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I hope that they're not going to turn around in your parking lot. Obviously, I can't restrict them from using Community Road because it is a public road.
Right.
But I, I just don't, I, I don't see where there would be a need necessarily to turn around in the church's parking lot.
You could have all construction vehicles remain on site and not access other...
But does that speak more to storage? Because they're not going to store it on the church's property.
If they will during construction, while they're using it.
I don't think that they would, but I would add that just for assurances. It's property that does not belong to them. It's private property that belongs to someone else, so I don't think that there would be any type of storage of construction vehicles, but for an added layer of protection, I will add that all construction vehicles ought to be, are to be restricted to the subject property.
With the... Go ahead, Commissioner.
And there's to, construction properties not to utilize any adjacent parcels to, to turn around vehicles or use any adjacent parcels for any reason. Let's just leave it at that.
Okay. Just for the purpose of zoning, unless there's a stipulation between adjacent property owner where there's an agreement between them, our stipulations really are to remain with the subject property. We can't stipulate any agreement that they may have with a property outside of the subject property. with a property outside of the subject property for zoning.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, but, but those, but those stipulations would prohibit them from entering into such an agreement if the church wanted to.
Okay, okay. We'll just leave it there. We'll just leave it in as a condition for that additional. Thank you.
Is this, um, stipulation clear for our clerks? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? I'm sorry, sir. By the time we call, by the time we take up the motion, there really is no back and forth with, um, any ma- sorry, sir, it's not appropriate. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you. Why don't we take, um, a break for about five minutes, and that'll give the applicant opportunity to speak to the commissioner and give us all a personal break if needed. Thank you.
Good morning and welcome back to our zoning hearing. This is February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four. I'll turn things over to you, John, for you to get us set up for our next case.
Thank you. Uh, next case is LUP two, Ronald McDowell, requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in land lot three sixty-five of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the north side of Lakeside Drive, northwest of Chastain Lakes Drive. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP two? One? Okay, let the director show there's one person opposed. All those who would like to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning. My name is Ronald McDowell. So I'm here today, uh, trying to get a temporary parking for at least twenty-four months. Reason why is that I kind of backed myself up in the corner. And, uh, I had a garage in my house. My mother-in-law is eighty-two years old, and she's failing in health. So what I did was I converted that into a space for her to be able to take care of her. So that was the purpose of converting the garage. But what I did not know is this, is that my plans were to build a garage onto the house. What I did find out when I was gonna through the plans were that I ended up coming to the zoning to try to get a zoning to put it close to the house or, or next to the house. And I found out that the blue, uh, thing you see there is from watershed. There's a drain easement that runs right down through, up under the driveway. So, uh, from going through and back over there, found out that I could not build anything on top of that. Okay. From the zoning meeting, uh, we had, um, February, early part of February, found out that they was suggesting a carport. Now, from leading to the language of the HOA, it was saying basically that the way the language interprets, may interpret that I can't have a carport. But I also wanted to show this here. I do have the option where that my driveway is big enough for the cars, so it wouldn't be in the street. And Cobb County said that I could park on the street, but I was trying to not be able to block the right of way as cars go in and out. And, uh, also, the cars is not just like collection of cars. The idea of the adults in the house is me and my wife. Then we have my mother-in-law. Then we have, uh, a son who's going to Kennesaw State that's eighteen. Uh, another son there. And, uh, he's, uh, moved from Alabama to here to try to get his own place. And then I have my daughter who's sixteen that has a car. So the one that's sixteen, when she turns eighteen, her thing is to go to Tennessee State or somewhere. And I'm just asking for twenty-four months. That would reduce that down. And hopefully by the end, my son can get into med school, and he can go where he needs to go. So, uh, then I also have behind the gate, there's room enough if I had to put a car behind that gate. So, um, code enforcement was called out because they said I had too many cars. He asked me about it, and I told him exactly and explained to him. And his suggestion was to, for me to either, I have to do something about it. What do something about it would be take two cars, put them in front, in the front of the house on the street, or come here and try to get a temporary parking permit.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll now hear from opposition, and you'll have ten minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name's Michelle Sutcliffe, and I'm a resident of Chastain Lakes. And I'm here as just a resident. I don't represent the HOA. I just want to make that clear. The issue that I have is this is a residential neighborhood. And as Mr. McDowell stated, he, um, he actually started construction on his garage prior to obtaining the term permits and then received the permits kind of while he was in process because some neighbors complained asking about whether or not he had received permitting for the conversion of his garage to living space. That's my understanding. So I, I don't want to swear that that's a hundred percent the, what happened, but he received verbal approval from the HOA, but there's nothing in writing. And in addition to that, what he did receive, um, the, the HOA asked for follow-up to see where is your plan for the garage? And he has yet to submit any kind of plan for any type of garage. So I don't foresee this as being a twenty-four month issue. I see this as a longer, more permanent issue. The other concern I have is that, um, he has multiple properties, and I don't know if his planning to turn the garages and to turn this property into a rental property. And then the six vehicles would be rental vehicles. And we, um, are working on that in our HOA to eliminate that scenario so that we don't have as many rentals because we're so close to the university. But if you'll pull up the pictures that Mr. McDowell provided, the driveway that he currently has, the other one, is in violation of DOT. It is on the right-of-way, and it's not supposed to be there. And they've asked him to move that. In addition, the building in the back in the other image is also not allowed. So he, in my opinion, he has a history of not following, um, the rules. He, um, the planning commission has recommended that this not be approved. And I would like to request that the planning commission, um, that the Board of Commissioners follows through with that recommendation of the planning commission. In addition, we had an HOA meeting earlier this year, and there was a petition that was signed, and over twenty residents signed it. And then a neighbor of his, there was some discussion, and then the petition disappeared. So I don't have that for you today. I didn't do the petition, but there wa- there is opposition to this. It's not just me. I think the Board of Commissioners has received other letters from other residents that are not in favor of this zoning change or, um, temporary land use permit. Let's see if I have anything else that I wanted to add. I'm, it's, the other concern is how is he planning on building a garage? I don't see how he can even put a garage. He's gonna have to put it in the back behind his house. So, and that's also, um, he's close to exceeding his impervious surface maximum. So as far as changing the, um, driveway additionally. And his, his wife came to the annual meeting, and she said, oh, it's not six cars, but they regularly have four cars in the driveway now since the complaint and two in the street. And if, if his daughter's not driving and his mother-in-law's infirmed, I don't understand why they have so many vehicles. That's just the bottom line. So I don't know if you have any questions for me. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. If the commissioner has any questions, she'll call you back.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone here in opposition? Not seeing any. Commissioner, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Um, could I have the applicant to come back up? Um, sir, how many adults currently have cars or in, in your household? I know you're all related, but how, how many cars or?
Five adults.
Five adults?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And there's no garage for two cars? There's no garage?
That's correct. I think, um, I'm not gonna get into the HOA part, the, but I will say this real quickly. When I first came, well, started with the idea, I put in a request. Now bear in mind that she come on after the other board had left. The board sent back my information to me and said, and I have the people from the board that can, uh, send something to you guys to show that I put in all the proper paperwork through the board to try to do it the right way. And as part for the concrete as DOT, there's only three feet from the circle that was supposed to be removed that what the concrete came up too far. Then that was abandoned because they were supposed to redo the easement through there, Cobb County. And they said, let it sit until they redo that. So whatever happens with the money as of the November, they decided to do a project by trying to do it from the other side of the, uh, behind my neighbor, trying to do it that way. That's the only thing. As for me trying to, uh, get away with something or what have you, and she said more properties, that's not true as well. So all I'm here to do is just try to do something, and I was trying to do it right. And obviously, there's some opposing. But if, if the board decides not to, then the, according to the agreement of the regulation, said that it has the size of my house, meaning eight adults. And I can have six cars, two in the garage and four outside. So if the four outside, then that means that I would have to park on the street. So, but I really thank you guys for your consideration. And you have any more questions for me?
No, I don't. I don't know if anybody else. I don't.
All right.
You can proceed. I, I would like to call, is it Ms. Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Uh, back up. I, I know you said you were just representing yourself. You live in the neighborhood.
Correct.
In Chastain Lakes. Um, but are you familiar with your covenants?
Yes.
Okay, because we can enforce covenants.
I understand.
Up here. That would be up to your HOA, um, for the things that you mentioned. But our code is four cars outside. And I don't, I don't know if your covenants restrict parking on the street?
They do not.
Okay, so?
But the planning commission recommended that that not be done because of the right-of-way. There was a recommendation in the planning commission.
There was a recommendation in the Planning Commission, recommendation that they not be, park on the right-of-way either. And in addition to that, he's already violating county code also by having those two structures on the easement in the backyard. You can see him in the image right there, those two.
The sheds.
Sheds.
Are, are they in violation of your HOA covenants?
He asked permission to have, it's my understanding, he requested to put in a shed, and he was denied and did it anyway.
Okay.
And the HOA is working on that, but not making much headway.
Okay.
But the biggest issue is that the number of vehicles. And, you know, a problem of his own making, as he's admitted, because he converted the garage without having plans for the new garage. And if he had submitted everything at once, he would have find, he would have known that it was an easement, and wouldn't have been able to build that additional garage. And I don't think our neighborhood should have to suffer with the unsightly six vehicles in his driveway, because he didn't have the foresight to submit the plans as he intended them to be in, in final phase.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions for her?
I do. Commissioner?
Sheffield, go ahead first.
No, I, I thought I saw a fence around the property. Can you put that back up?
So, in the other photo suggests that the vehicles are on the backside of the fence. Is this the front of the property?
That's the side.
Okay. Alright, this is the side, so this is visible.
On the driveway.
Okay, so this is visible from the street. Okay, alright. And, and the DOT, the concrete that's in the right-of-way, is that at the bottom of this photo? Okay. Okay.
Manhole, or drainage.
And all six vehicles would be parked in this driveway? Is the proposal, okay. And how, how, how large is the, the house, John?
I think he's allowed eight.
Thirty-two hundred square feet, and based on code, how many vehicles are allowed to be parked at this property?
He could have eight on a property, only which four could be outside.
Right, okay.
And that's based on the square footage. But our code is four outside.
Right, and he's asking for how many outside?
Six.
And just for clarification, Commissioner, we may need to have the applicant come up. He shared that the garage was converted for living space, but then I also heard that another garage is being built. Is that something different?
You'll have to ask him.
Okay.
I think he wanted to, but the HOA covenants don't allow.
Hello, Mr. McDowell, just for clarification, your testimony, you shared that you converted the garage for your mother-in-law, but then I also heard that a garage is being built on the property. Can you provide some clarification?
The intentions were to build the garage right where you see the two cars were, right there.
Okay.
And because of the easement, the only thing stopped me was the easement.
Okay.
So in other words, I came down to do a permit and all that kind of stuff, so I can get everything started. Then I went to watershed, and the zoning sent me over to watershed to make sure. And they made sure, and they said it was running through there. So, then the idea was to put it in the back, in my backyard. What I end up is that going over the, the amount for concrete. Each, there's a certain amount of concrete each yard can have. So, and that's what happened there.
Okay.
And so, my hands were, were tied. And just that, at the end of the driveway right here, where you see the little circle, the little circle, three feet from there, comes around that circle. It's the only thing that the DOTs told me I need to remove. The rest of the driveway was fine.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, may you stay up? There are additional questions, are you? Mr. McDowell, may you please remain up here? Thank you. Commissioner?
Hi, Mr. McDowell. So for clarification, looking at this picture, the lighter colored cement that's on here, did you add that?
Yes, ma'am.
You added this, okay. And then my next question is, in the backyard, there's two structures. What are those structures?
That's the old picture. That's the first structure that was there, the big long white one, the white one there? That was to hold the contents that was in the garage, while the garage was being renovated. That structure's not there anymore.
Okay, and what's the structure behind it, then?
The, the one behind it is a shed, you know, you like to keep your lawnmower and all that kind of stuff in.
Okay, and then there looks like there's a tinier shed in between the two.
Well, that was moved, because that was, my wife keep her gardening stuff in there. So it's not, that's not even there anymore.
Okay, and so the large shed that you have, your outdoor equipment stored in, there's no heating or cooling to that shed?
That's done what?
There's no heating or cooling in that shed?
No, ma'am. They was called out for that on Thursday, and they came out and measured it. And from my understanding, for that particular shed, where the little small one was, that shed needed to move up five feet. And that would satisfy that complaint.
Thank you.
Sir, I had some questions too, and they were in line with Commissioner Sheffield's question. But it's a bit of a quandary that you're in, because you're allowed eight vehicles. Only four can be outside. Your home doesn't seem to have a four-car garage. So, we're just in this space, this delta, where we're trying to figure out what to do with these additional vehicles that are desired. I believe the request is to park vehicles in the driveway. And are you currently parking the two additional vehicles on the roadway?
The two additional vehicles parked on the road, because when I left here from the zoning, that's when those two were starting to be parked on the road, because they had denied it. And for some reason or another, until I went back to the office and spoke with her, I had another meeting coming up.
Okay.
And I had thought, this case has been lost, so I didn't want to be in violation.
I understand that. And it's my understanding that if it's a public roadway, he is allowed to park his vehicles there, for our zoning manager?
The way the code reads, Madam Chair, is, is he cannot park any cars adjacent to the house on the roadway, is the way the code reads.
Our current code?
Yeah.
Okay, if I can have DOT approach then, I have a question with respect to that, because we've had other matters outside of here where cars were permitted to be parked on the roadway. So I just want to be clear, that policy.
Good morning, Lygia Florham, DOT.
Good morning, Lygia. Can you help clarify the parking policy for our roads, particularly in the subdivision?
It is my understanding that if it is a local road, you're allowed to park on the street. However, we discourage it, because it does affect the traffic. So there's a conundrum there.
Okay. We've had some communities in the past actually work with our Department of Transportation to have no parking signs erected on those local roads, because we were unable to prohibit that parking, because our code does facilitate that. So, I'm hearing a contrast in what you're saying about the local road, and being able to park on the local road, and what you're sharing with me, John, about not being able to park adjacent to a home. Where are you pulling your code reference from?
In the zoning code, under the definition of single-family home, under 134-1, it does state about the 390 per, related adult, the 390 per vehicle. But near the end, it says, this includes vehicles parked within the right-of-way adjacent to a dwelling.
Okay. So, there is some particular, there is some conflict. We need to address that in our new unified development code, where we're looking to clean up our code. Thank you for sharing. So then again, there's just a question of, short of the applicant having, you know, a home that has a typical number of garage parking spaces. Our code is facilitating for him to be able to have up to eight cars. Our code is restricting him to only four vehicles parked outside. And the request today is for how many vehicles, Commissioner Burrell?
Six.
For six, okay. So it's, it's a little bit of a known...
That they would all be outside, 'cause the garage is being converted.
Yeah.
And it was just two additional outside.
Okay.
And with the code.
Alright, sir, thank you. I just needed some, I, I do, I'm some personal curiosity about the use of the vehicles. Yes, just, if you could approach before Commissioner Burrell responds. Yes. You stated you have six adults that are in the property, yes, you're children. So each one, I presume, has a vehicle, or one of you may have more than one?
The only one that's, the truck there, that is the truck that I haul the grass stuff and all that stuff in. And one of the kids go to high school, North Cobb, she drives the car.
Okay. Thank you, sir, you don't have to go into the rest, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Burrell.
Okay. Well, first of all, this was a result of code enforcement. And I've also had several emails, calls, and letters from neighbors within Chastain Lakes opposing this. And our code is a limit of four outside. What's before us today is the number of cars. So I, I can't address the easement, the concrete, the right-of-way, the impervious surface, but all that is important. I can direct staff to visit the site and see if there are any violations, and what needs to be done for those other issues. But what's before us today is the cars. And there is a limit of four cars in our current code. And it was always my understanding that cars parked on the street, for our code, couldn't block a driveway or impair another property. And I think that's what John was referencing with being parked on the street. So, for the request for six cars outside on the, in the driveway, we'll make a motion to deny this request.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
My only concern, Commissioner Burrell, and this came up during the testimony, is the stormwater easement, yet we see that the applicant has added concrete here. But then a comment was made that the easement has to be redone. So, Lygia, could you, do, can you address that? Or, or is it Andrew that needs to address this? I'm not sure, 'cause just looking at this, with, with the way the concrete has been added here, we've changed the slope, which is gonna change the flow.
Yeah, so all I can comment is that this was not permitted. It was not submitted to us for approval. If you were gonna wind a driveway, we would have to permit it, and it has not come through our office yet. And then, yes, there's the stormwater, we probably will have told them that he cannot pay. But I think, Andrew, you'll, you'll add your comments, but I think they allow driveway winding if, within the easement. But I'll let him comment on it.
So do you know if they've altered the slope at all through this area?
I am, I'm not certain of that.
You're not sure, okay, thank you. Andrew, you may first.
Good morning, Andrew Heath, Cobb County, Stormwater Management.
So when reference was made, that the easement needed to be redone, can you explain what needs to happen here?
Yes, and I heard the applicant say today, really with respect to the easement, if you're looking in this photograph here, the easement crosses the property kind of at a slight angle from left to right, kind of going off the property at the back right corner of the property. So, there you go, you can see that better. So the driveway that we saw there previously in that image out near the street, the county doesn't really have a problem with driveways being within the easement for access to the property. So we allow that, just not structures within the easement. And so I heard the applicant say today that, at the rear of the property, where you see those structures, that some of those, some of those structures are now removed. And if I heard the applicant say, that the structure that's all the way at the rear, the storage shed, that you see just barely the corner of that is within that combined storm sanitary sewer easement, that I heard him say that code enforcement was going to have him shift the building over five feet, because I believe it's too close to the property line. And I was just measuring that before I came up. And if he does, if he moves it about five feet away, that will actually move it outside the easement as well. So then the building would be outside the easement. And then from just an easement standpoint, we wouldn't have problem with the, with the driveway concrete being within the easement, so I think we would be okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrell, do you have any other questions?
I just wanted to add, I know that there is concern with the HOA, and as it has been communicated by Commissioner Burrell, that obviously that enforcement is outside of our purview and our enforcement capabilities on the board. But this one is interesting, because by code, he is allowed eight vehicles on his property, and he's asking for six to be parked outside. It is a relatively long driveway, and I've, we have had applications come before us with more vehicles than allow for a much shorter driveway. So, you know, there are certainly some unique challenges facing this family, considering an ailing in-law, and the challenges you have there in being a caregiver. And the kids are very close to being outside of the home. You mentioned, there was a mention that the daughter will be leaving for college in a couple of years, and the son is headed to medical school. So this is a very temporary situation. I am supportive of this application, and I'll leave it to the HOA to pursue whatever avenues need to be pursued with respect to any HOA violations. The applications that we generally have before us with vehicles, there's been a consensus, or at least for the majority of the board, that living situations have changed. Whether it's a result of family sizes, inflation, just family dynamics, things are changing. So, you know, I find that our neighbors or residents are willing to work with their neighbors to provide those accommodations, especially in this particular situation, where there again is an ailing parent, and you have teenage kids that are on their way out of, out of the house. So I am supportive of this application, and it's my hope that the HOA and the homeowner can work out whatever HOA issues exist.
Commissioner Burrell, yes?
Thank you. I, I do understand that there are hardships from time to time. But we, we've had a lot of requests in this area, it's near the college, or university, I guess I should say, town center. I mean, it's, it's an area that is, you know, a lot of subdivisions that, you know, don't want to see, want us to comply with the code, and it would set a precedent. And I just, I just, we have a motion and a second on the floor to deny. But I would give them, you know, maybe 60 days to come into compliance, and also direct staff to address... and also direct staff to address the other issues that were, that were mentioned, if there are any violations. And then whatever the HOA covenants state, that would be up to them to enforce.
Commissioner Richardson?
Certainly, you know, this is your district. I will support your motion. But that being said, I do think that there are certain scenarios that come before us with regards to LUPs for these situations. For some of them, we have been very understanding. For others, you know, the history tells us that they're not necessarily looking to do the right thing. I think this is a unique case. I do disagree with the fact that it would set a precedent. That is the point of a LUP. But, you know, my heart goes out to the applicant on this. I can understand where the community is coming from, but this is an additional two cars outside for a short period of time, for a temporary use. So it also wouldn't impact the concern about potential rental, rental units. That is, that would be a completely different, that would be a significant change. That's not what this application is hinging on. So I did just want to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Richardson and Sheffield's remarks and also yours, Commissioner Burrow. This is always a delicate balance between moderating the interests of the community and the intent of our code and also the true hardship that it causes our citizens. And over time, we've learned of the true hardship that is being caused to families across not just our county, but throughout our region and even nationally about ensuring that there is housing and accessible and affordable housing. I understand the concerns around Kennesaw State over the several years that I've served on this board. I've heard the concerns with respect to possible students renting out homes and impacting the single-family character of communities. There is nothing that I've heard about this application that makes me think that that applies. This is a family that's trying to remain intact. And I think there are many people who would commend a family for taking care of an aging relative and trying to do what they can do to alleviate that additional burden that could be placed on society when they don't take care of an aged loved one. So we have a consideration of policy issues that extend beyond what perhaps we've considered traditionally in our code. I'm generally in support of commissioners. My heart has been leaning with the several decisions that I've made on this board towards keeping families intact, particularly understanding that when families can't care for families, we only exacerbate the issues when it comes to housing for Cobb. I think there's opportunity to reconcile our code to when a house does permit a certain number of vehicles, and the house is built in such a manner where those number of vehicles cannot be parked because even if he desired the full range of vehicles that were permitted, he would still be in this quandary. So conversion of the garage, it's an issue here particularly, but it's possible that may not have been the issue because he's permitted more vehicles than what he does have. With that, I'm in support of the application that's before us just because I know of the tenuous nature of housing in our county and of my commitment towards us having family, being able to take care of their family. And I recognize that this is a temporary issue. It's not something that is a long-term issue. And I'm hoping, similar to what Commissioner Sheffield, that the neighborhood is able to work through the issues that they have.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
I would just also like to add that staff and planning commission recommended denial.
Thank you. Commissioner Garrenbrough?
John, I have a question, a couple of questions for you. The 3,245 square foot home, was that prior to the garage being converted? Or is that now the square footage after the garage was permitted?
I believe that was the square footage before the garage was converted.
Before the garage was converted? And do we know if it was a two-car garage originally or three?
It was a two-car garage.
It was a two-car garage. While I support Commissioner Burrow, my question is, we know the BZA board approves for structures to be built on properties that go over the impervious surface recommendations, which in this case is 35%, John?
Yes.
And usually when that's done, then they require them to do some sort of stormwater detention. So my question is, do we want to potentially hold this for 60 days, allow the applicant to work with staff to get the buildings moved? But then would he be able to potentially build the garage off the backside of the house? Is that something that was considered? Because in looking at the pictures, I don't know, CP, do you still have the pictures?
As my understanding that the HOA did not.
So, so again, not understanding, it's hard to tell if this is a deck here off of the, I'm looking, it'd be the right side next to the fence, next to the driveway. I don't know if there's a possibility of potentially putting in a parking structure because it appears by the gate photo that we see that the cement is going through the other side of the gate. And so my question then becomes is how far does the, so is this the backside? Is this looking towards the street, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. So to me, we've already got the driveway here. Can we potentially put a parking structure behind the home, knowing that it's going to exceed the impervious and then he will have to address that? Do we want to give him some time to potentially look at those considerations? Or why not just park there?
I would, but I don't know what their HOA, it was said that the HOA said he could not build a garage in the back, and he would be going over the impervious. But if their HOA covenants, if they're more restrictive than ours, our code, that they rule.
Well, and I understand, you know, HOA covenants, and the board is not to enforce those. But if he goes to zoning and planning and submits a plan, shouldn't our staff be the one that say, yes, he could do it, or no, he could not?
I'm sorry, ma'am, we're in the middle of a motion. It's not appropriate this time.
They can be more restrictive. And I don't know, it was said that the HOA did not, would not allow another structure in the back, a garage.
Okay, but they're saying about.
Why don't we hold it? Why don't we just hold it?
Oh, thank you. So when they're saying it's because there's too many structures, the pictures that we are seeing, I would agree with that statement originally. But then the applicant came up and stated that the one was just temporary storage, and then they had the small one that is now removed as well. So he now only has, my understanding, and I'm sure code enforcement can confirm this, only has one accessory structure in the rear of his property.
Right, and that has to be moved over five feet for the easement.
Right, so with that, so we've taken away the obstacles that have allowed him not to build a carport or garage to the back of his property. Should we give him the opportunity to possibly work with staff to see if there's something that can be done?
Okay, let's let Commissioner Richardson weigh in, and then I see you, Commissioner Sheffield.
Thanks. I, thank you. I think that would be a good pathway. I understand that we're reciting elements of HOA covenants that we may have heard, but we do not know them, and it is not our purview to know them. So by providing him time to work with staff, that means that he can also work with the HOA and staff, and that would be on his side to take control of that so that we're not guessing or projecting what we think the HOA covenants say or don't say. So that, that was my comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Just two things. In looking at this photo, there's a concrete, I don't know if this is a driveway, the photo is pretty small. The shot is small, so I don't know if there's an opportunity to park vehicles on the other side, on this side of the fence. I mean, obviously, there would have to be a different door installed here, but I don't know if some vehicles can be parked on the side of the grass on this concrete structure, concrete slab. And the other thing, John, it's come up several times about PC recommendation and staff recommending denial. But is it the practice of the county to typically deny these type of applications that's asking for more vehicles than allowed and leave it to the board to decide? I just don't know that I've ever come across one that was approved in advance.
Yes, and, you know, for the most part, these type of petitions come in as a result of a complaint from code enforcement. So they've already demonstrated that there's a nuisance, they're against county, they violate, they violated county code, and they caused a problem for the neighborhood. So staff typically, when we see the code enforcement report and go through it, if there's enough in there, we'll recommend denial of it.
Okay, but the denial isn't necessarily based on the request, it's other factors that may play a part in the denial?
Well, it's based on the code enforcement complaint, basically.
Not necessarily the number of cars he's looking to have at the property?
Well, the number of cars is always listed in the code enforcement complaint, so we knew there were six to begin with.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks. Just a point of clarity for the application and getting to the point that Commissioner Richardson made. We're a decision-making body, but there are other rules that are to be taken into consideration, and those are the rules of the HOA. And so I'm going to ask our county attorney that if we provide that something is able to take place and that conflicts with the rules of the HOA, how, what would, what law would supersede the other?
The private contract that he has with the HOA when he purchased the house. Those are the covenants that run with the land, and he's agreed to those covenants, so.
Okay, so we can make a decision independent of the HOA, and this use may still not be permitted, but it allows us to address the policy concerns on our end. I appreciate Commissioner Garrenbrough's consideration for moderating the interest. I would just say that, again, the LUP is temporary. Building something that's cement is more permanent. So again, I kind of lean towards why not permit this for just a temporary timeframe while his children are transitioning, which could alleviate us putting something permanently in place that could continue to violate what the interests are of the HOA.
And while I understand that, then when they go to sell the house, there's still not a garage. And then the next owner's going to come in and going to have vehicles that are going to be parking outside. So do we want to maybe consider that, you know, once the situation changes where they no longer need the garage to be used as living quarters, we stipulate that it has to be transitioned back to a garage because otherwise this is going to keep perpetuating and continuing, but then also set precedence for other people to convert their garages to living quarters and then expound on the parking situation?
I hear you, and I think this is a very tough issue. I think if someone were to purchase the home, they at least have immediate notice of the site being converted. But it does put any homeowner back in the same situation. But this is not the first time that garages have been converted. This is, I've seen this done even before our current housing crisis, and it's just kind of like the consideration that we have for accessory, accessory mother-in-law suites, sometimes they're referred to, that are built sometimes behind a home. I think there often is consideration for caring for an ailing parent. And so, you know, Commissioner Garrenbrough is getting to how do we consider this in the long term? And I think that's a worthy point. I just don't know if we want to go through something as onerous as, again, making him convert the space back. There could be people out there who are looking for such a space as this because of their considerations for how they want to utilize their home. But I do recognize that it does put the next homeowner at a greater limitation where they would have the ability to comply with our code with parking six vehicles on the property, and we would immediately limit that to four with this, with the way that things are today. But, you know, maybe that's a consideration for the property owner if they really are interested in the zoning. With that, Commissioner Burrow?
We have a motion and a second to deny.
Okay, so there is, you could substitute the motion. I thought I heard you consider holding this?
I would with direction, with direction to meet with his HOA and staff to see if a structure could be built in the back. But again, if the HOA does not allow it, how can we approve it?
You don't enforce HOA, so you could improve it based upon your regular code. But whether it be built or not would be another question.
So let's say in 30 days, he comes back to us and we allow another structure in the back to be built. And then the HOA, what do they do if it's in their covenants, he can't have that?
It would be up to the HOA to whether they are enforcing the covenants or not.
I don't understand how we, that we are enforcing their covenants or we're not enforcing because we're allowing something that they don't.
We don't, we don't take any consideration into the HOA covenants when you're making, you rule on what's the code and what's permitted pursuant to the code.
No, I just want to go back to the photo, well, it's on our screen. If you can put it up, Cornelius. And I, on the other one, on that side of it, you know, I think there may be a viable opportunity here to utilize this driveway on the backside of the fence to store additional vehicles. It wouldn't require an additional build of a shed or a temporary garage. Obviously, the entryway would need to be changed to accommodate any vehicles that would be on the other side of the fence. But again, based on this photo, I don't know if that driveway would be wide enough for a vehicle. But just looking at it, it appears that it might be. So I don't know if there's some consideration to park the vehicles on the other side of this fence. At least it'll be out of public's view.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
I just want to go back to some clarity because the application on this is for additional cars. So if we held this and it came back, it wouldn't be us approving, I don't perceive, it would be us approving or disapproving a garage structure. That is more of a planning process direction. And the application that would come back to us is, are we allowing additional cars? And based upon whatever comes from that discussion, it could be, hey, we found a pathway, and that pathway is going to take us six months to resolve. And we could still deny the application with a six-month compliance. Or it could be an approval for six months for the two additional cars while construction's happening. I don't perceive that we're approving something that the HOA would, like that, it's, HOA doesn't come into that conversation at all except for the onus on the applicant's side to speak with HOA to present to planning and zoning something that is appropriate. And I don't see it as a temporary garage. I see it as if there's going to be a solution to this parcel, it would be the garage for this parcel. That would be compliant with both the HOA and with staff. If there is nothing, then we'll be faced with a similar decision that we're being faced with today. Do we allow for two additional cars or not? That is how I perceive a hold and let me know if I'm incorrect in understanding that.
It's up to Commissioner Burrow how to perceive it.
So do I need to amend my motion? So do I need to, do I need to amend my motion to hold for 30 days?
You don't need to, no, there's a motion and a second.
For denial?
If there's a substitute motion, do we need to vote on the first one on the floor?
You can withdraw it and then forward to a new motion, as long as there's consensus of the board to withdraw. After it's seconded, it's the board's motion at that point in time, so.
Okay. So I withdraw my motion to deny and make a motion to hold this for 30 days for the applicant, to work with staff and his HOA.
Okay, is there a second?
And that would be the March 19th meeting, correct?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Commissioners, are you good to continue or does anyone need a break?
We don't have one more case.
All right, just checking.
Okay, next case is LUP 3, Fossil Lot, Adesina, request a temporary land use permit to allow more adults than the code allows in Land Lot 645 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Ridge Crest Circle, north of Ridge Crest Drive. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP 3, Fossil Lot, Adesina? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? I don't think she ever came in.
What would you like to do, Commissioner Burrow? Oh, is it District 4?
I mean, we're like two hours in out of courtesy, we can call, but I'm inclined to hold it. Okay, let's just still, just give her a call and, yeah, all right.
Okay. Okay, John?
Okay, next case is other business item number four of 2024, which is considering the site plan and stipulations for Luke, we met regarding applications Z 83 and SLUP 14 of 2016. The property is located on the south side of Powder Springs Road, east of Sanders Road and Land Lots 838 and 865 of the 19th District. The applicant is present and earlier there was one person here posed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Luke, we met with Access Infrastructure, here presenting 2951 Powder Springs Road. We've, are going to display the project that was approved, zoning position 83 petition, excuse me, back in 1018, 2016. This was the rezoning and SLUP project that was approved. There was proposed two phases. Phase one was four buildings with surface parking lot, as you can see in the dark shaded color. Phase, phase two was a 60,000 square foot, three-story ministry building with a exit drive onto Powder Springs Road. After conversations with staff, we submitted a updated site plan last year. Due to some environmental issues on the site that we discovered in 2013, we've significantly reduced the scope of work. As you can see, there's currently proposed one phase of work. It's a two-story, reduced square foot building, ministry building, as well as surface parking circulation around the building. And it also includes the two-way drive on the east side of the site, which was previously approved, as well as the exit drive on the west side of the site. The 2016 application also included the turn lane, which we are including with this application. We've gotten fire comments, life safety in traffic, I believe, to this point. We have addressed all of the fire comments, we're in the process of requesting a fire flow test. We are working with the county DOT on the methodology for the traffic impact analysis. We are planning on meeting the six conditions of the 2016 approval, as well as the proposed six conditions of the 2024 application.
I'm Frederick Canderson, pastor of Covenant Christian Ministries and here supporting my engineer, if there's any questions.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak for this applicant or application? Okay, not seeing any, we'll hear from anyone who may be in opposition. Yes, sir.
Hello, Board, my name's Matt Hunter.
Yes.
I live at the property just below where the church does, is proposing their site. I live at 3835 Sanders Road. Sanders Road, you can see right there. And the problem is that I have, is there's a creek on that property that runs through my property. And I just want to make sure it's addressed properly because after it goes through my property, it feeds through the other neighbor's property. And with that much pavement, there's a lot more water to be considered. So that is my concern.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you sharing that with us.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here in opposition? We'll hear staff's recommendation.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve the request subject to the site plan received January 17, 2024, with the district commissioner approved minor modifications, subject to stormwater management comments, fire comments, COB DOT comments, building elevation contained in the other business packet with the final elevation to be approved by the district commissioner. In all previous conditions not in conflict, to remain in effect.
Thank you, John, I'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call Andrew up to address concerns regarding the creek on the property.
Hello, good morning, Commissioner, Andrew Heath, County Stormwater Management.
Good morning. There was concern by Mr. Hunter regarding the creek that runs from the subject property onto his property. Would you mind addressing some of his concerns?
Yes, absolutely. I think the OB case has to do with modifying the site plan from the previous zonings, I think. And so I believe our comments are basically recommending that we take the previous comments that were made about managing stormwater from the site and carry those forward with that so that any change that's made to the site plan by the other business item would be, you know, would be reflected with that. But as a general rule, though, of course, any site that's developed like that, and you can see on the image there, any site that's developed like that is going to have to provide stormwater management on-site to control the runoff of water and provide for water quality treatment as well. And so it's our goal through doing that, that a downstream neighbor, you know, once the site is built and the stormwater management controls are in place, then hopefully they should see, you know, no degradation from what they had previously that was there. And so it is definitely going to be a change for the neighbor. It looks like the property, at least in this image, has a lot of woods on the property and so, of course, naturally, the woods were going to be cleared, but that's what the stormwater management system would be, is to mitigate the impact of that clearing of the, of the trees and that natural area. And so it will definitely be a change for the, for the adjoining neighbor, particularly the downstream neighbor, but the systems that we put in place, we want to try to use those to manage the water quality and stormwater management and control that so that the downstream neighbor won't have those, you know, negative impacts associated with that.
Okay, and when you say change, can you just describe that a little more for, for Mr. Hunter? You said that the property downstream or his property, there would be a change once the detention facility is installed?
Yeah, I don't really, I don't mean that, that's our goal, is that there wouldn't be a change for him, actually, I may have misspoken, but the, on this property itself, once it's developed and it's cleared, graded and paved, that maybe that's what I was referring to, is that a downstream neighbor is going to look at it and say, oh, it looks a lot different than it did before, but we're going to put these systems in place to manage stormwater runoff so that the downstream neighbor won't see, you know, deleterious effects from the stormwater management, from not managing, I should say.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anyone have anything for Andrew?
Just noting, it says here a pre and post development survey will be provided. Is that to ensure there's no additional runoff downstream?
And a lot of times the pre and post study has to do with particularly if there's a downstream lake or something like that, where we're concerned particularly about like sediment loss or something like that. But, but yes, so I think that was probably in the original, I guess the comments from the original zone.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Gamble?
CP, can we bounce back to the site plan that was up? Do we have that? Okay, Andrew, at the bottom here, it says a four-foot wide concrete flume with rip rap at the very bottom, oh, in the parking lot?
Yeah, I'll take your word for it, I can't quite read it from here.
I'm sorry. So, and this is coming from an experience in my own district that we're having with, essentially, yes, while you've got the rip rap there to slow it down, is there going to be some other type of detention or retention to help slow the water? Because once it comes through the asphalt on the parking lot, and I'm assuming this is going to be an underground system because it looks like they're going to have to re-pipe potentially part of the stream, how are we going to slow that water discharging into the stream, which I think is where Mr. Hunter is concerned? Because we're going, it's going to be moving a quick, a lot quicker with taking the trees down and remanufacturing the terrain.
Yeah, absolutely. And so although that's a little difficult to read, I think when this case originally came through zoning, we were considering just the other business item of making a change to the site plan, but you're absolutely right, when it goes through and it's developed, then definitely we want to consider, you know, the impacts from discharging that runoff and not creating those impacts on the downstream neighbor. And so with respect particularly to the gentleman who spoke, you know, in opposition to it, if he has some very specific concerns, I'd be glad to talk to him about that and make sure that we take that into account when it actually comes through plan review to make sure we've got his concerns addressed, if you'd like to.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Andrew? Thank you, I'll turn things back to you, Commissioner.
I do have a question, I'm going to bounce back to John. The original building was 60,000 square feet and it was two stories and the revised plan is 31,000. Is the impervious surface the same or has there been a reduction in the impervious surface?
The impervious surface is probably about the same. Keep in mind, for a church, the maximum impervious is 70% and they're not anywhere near that with this plan.
Okay. Because I didn't see that anywhere in my notes unless I missed it. Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions or anything? No? All right. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Hunter, for hanging with us all day and sharing your concerns. Hopefully, your issues were addressed with Andrew, but we can also follow up offline once we move forward with, with, with the, with the project and we have those additional reports. So I'll make sure that I get your information and keep you in the loop as to what's happening in that respect. But I do support staff's recommendation for approval and I am prepared to make a motion.
Yes, go right ahead.
You know what? Okay. All right, hold on one moment. I make a motion to approve OB 4, 2024. I just want to add some stipulations regarding construction. I did not see that in my notes anywhere. Hours of construction to be Monday through Sunday, I'm sorry, excuse me, Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And all other staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. So with that, there are two matters, I believe that we had calls going out to applicants for today's agenda, John, if you can give us an update.
We did contact LUP 3, Fossil Lot, Adesina, and she won't be able to make it in today. So if the board would like, they could just continue that case until next month.
Okay.
Yes, March 19.
Okay, I make a motion to continue LUP 3, 2024 to March 19th, Board of Commissioners' zoning hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Anything else?
And that's all I have because the board did continue LUP 1 until March also.
Correct.
So that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, with that, thank you all for being here today for our zoning hearing and I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.